All right. All right, we'll call the called order the planning commission meeting for the town of Pulaski for September ninth, two thousand and twenty four. We'll let everybody know that we're now live streaming the meetings as of tonight. So I guess that means we're recording as well. So be on your best behavior. I'll try. Ms. Bork, could we have a roll call, please?
Do you want me to wait? Okay. Um, Mr. Davis? Ms. Arthur? Mr. Scrants?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Mr. Hale?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Mr. Clark?
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. We can conduct business tonight. Next up, review and hopefully approval of the minutes of the August two thousand and twenty four meeting. Has everybody had a chance to review those minutes? They were sent out with the packet. Anybody has any? Comments, corrections, additions?
Van?
Or would like to make a motion on those? Happy to entertain it. Van has nothing.
Okay, that's a good sign.
That is.
Motion to approve August twenty twenty four minutes?
All right, thank you, Mr. Scrants. Got a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, minutes are approved. We have no public hearings on the docket, thankfully. We do have some new business. A review of a special exception request for major utility services. It hasn't been assigned a review number, right?
It has, I forgot to include it, it's ZPO twenty four S E dash oh three, I believe.
Okay. That would make sense. All right. Uh, would you like to give us a staff overview on this?
Certainly. Um, the applicant is Calvert Energy. They are submitting an application for major utility services in at the, in a unaddressed parcel at the end of the Montevista Road extension. This is a limited access area that is gated off by the Appalachian Electrical Power Company and Calvert is proposing to develop a twenty megawatt ballot battery storage facility on an adjacent vacant parcel. In review of similar information last year, the town attorney determined that the town's definition was sufficiently broad to allow such a use should town bodies decide that that is the that that is the direction they wish to take the town in. Our town comprehensive plan does not specifically address alternative energy as a goal within the comp plan. However, the the county has put in green energy goals within the county's comp plan and we could assist if 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 it was chosen to show our solidarity with the rest of Pulaski County. Again, that is up to public bodies to determine.
I I have a question or two for you already. I thought I heard you say that this areas, this property is access controlled by AEP?
Yes.
Okay. So you have to have AEP's permission to enter the property?
You have to, it is gated, yes.
Okay. Okay.
Or you have to be on the police force. They have access as well.
But it's not owned by AEP?
The parcel there, the parcel, the the access road leading up to, there is an adjacent parcel to the one, if you look at your staff report, that is flagged. That is owned by AEP, that triangle parcel. And right about where that triangle starts, they have cordoned off their access to that road.
Okay.
I'm very familiar with this one, there's a a trail right behind there. I'd walk by that very frequently, so very familiar with how this one.
I mean, is is there any potential issue with access accessing the property for for the project? That that's that's why I ask.
I I would assume you have.
I mean, you you own the road or the landowner with this with the eleven point five acres? They just have right, okay, they have an easement, okay. Right, all right. Right. Okay. But they can't prohibit you from accessing the property by having that, okay. That that's between you and the property owner then. Okay. The other question I have is how does this qualify as alternative or green energy? I understand it's electricity. But it's not an electricity production.
Right.
Right?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but as I understand it and I am not a electrical engineer by any means, right? That when electricity is generated, often there is an excess, right? And there is a means of capturing that energy and storing it to be released at a later time. And I could be wrong, but that is my understanding of the situation.
Okay. My basic understanding of the production of electricity says there's never excess production, they produce however much is drawn. So you would have to draw it in order for it to get produced. I always thought, you know, in my younger years, I just assumed that there's all this electricity out there waiting to come to my house or wherever I am. How is it kept in the lines? There aren't batteries out there.
So.
So they're not, I mean, it's not stored in batteries unless you build a place to store it in batteries, so.
Right.
The way I was thinking of this working, and I know there, I I did a little looking and found a description from New York Power of a twenty megawatt battery storage facility. I mean, it's an impressive feat to be able to do this. And I don't know that it could have been done nearly as efficiently, you know, ten or twenty years ago because of the battery technology. But the way I think of it is there are peak use periods and slack use periods where the electricity is either more expensive or less expensive. Right? So if I do my laundry in off-peak hours, my electric bill will go down slightly. There's room for money to be made in that by buying low and selling high, just like the stock market. That's what I was thinking would be an opportunity. I don't know what your plan is, so we will be interested to hear what and why, why Pulaski, those kind of things. Van?
I was just gonna double check, cause you led right into where I was gonna ask the question was, cause of the staff report and then Brian, you have a presentation.
Yeah, I I had asked Summer if she would invite you, I'm glad you came, so that you can hopefully educate us a little bit. Read a little bit about your background, very impressive. At least to me. So I'd be happy to, Summer, if you're, I assumed your report was done.
My report is.
Done enough?
Done enough, yeah.
Okay. So I'd invite you to come. Yeah. Let us know what we can know.
I'm happy to, because this is a new, it's not a new technology, but it's you're kind of a new use of technology at scale like this. So if there's questions that come up while I'm speaking, I'm I'm ready to address them versus waiting till the end, you know, so.
Yeah, this is more or less an educational session and and learning and discussion amongst us before we would call for a public hearing.
Sure, yeah, that's why I figure since it's new, there'll be questions that pop up, you might forget, so just go ahead and, you know, I'm I'm happy to stop and just address it right there on the spot.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah.
First of its kind in Pulaski.
Yeah, yeah, yep, yep, so I'm Brian Quinlan, my company is Calvert Energy. We own Peak Creek Energy Storage Center LLC. It's the project company that we've set up to do this project here. Can you go to the next one? So I've got a little bit of an agenda, first, a little bit of introduction about Calvert and EDF Renewables. My partners weren't able to make it, actually, this week is the biggest solar conference in the country. And so they're there and I'm here, so we had to split up duties. I got a quick project overview overview. And then what I did, and I normally do it this way, I kind of went through the special exception considerations and tried to address all those points. And then have a conclusion based on that, but then at the end, I also have a bunch of supplemental information that I added in to address things that Summer and I had spoken about and that I've seen come up in other special exception permitting processes that we've been through before. So put some extra stuff in. You can go to the next one. So Calvert Energy is my company, I've been in the business for thirty eight years. My background is, I'm a Naval Academy grad, Navy nuke. That got me into power, that's all I knew, so I'm still doing it. Mostly what, I sent, I set up Calvert in two thousand and eight, that's kind of the very, very beginning of solar. And I did solar really the whole kind of first, I guess, nine years or so. And then in two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, started looking at battery storage stuff, but it was still a little bit early. And then in two thousand and twenty one, Virginia class, I think it's called the Virginia Clean Energy Act, I think is what it is. And in that, they put requirements in for the utilities to do battery storage. And that was not only just to add more generation to the grid itself, but it's also to support renewable energy. And they have renewable energy requirements they're driving as well. So since and since two thousand and twenty one, I've been doing some some battery storage development only in Virginia. I've got one project that's fully developed, we're it's we're getting into the kind of the permitting phase, the construction permitting phase and discussions with Duke. I mean Dominion on that project. And there's a couple others I've got in Virginia there as well, you can see. Now, my partners are EDF, so EDF, they are, they're owned by the French utility Electricité de France, which is a national utility in France. They have a company set up here in the U.S. called EDF Renewables North America. And they are big. They own lots of power plants, they're involved in, you know, all kinds of different power. And they have a lot of experience in batteries as well. Go ahead. And you can see, it's EDF Renewables North America, so they do stuff, but they do stuff also in Europe as well, so not only North America. They they're really the kind of the independent power group outside the utility in France, so they get their fingers into a lot of different things. Go ahead. They've done a significant amount of battery storage, five thousand five hundred megawatts is a is a pretty big number. Just for comparison, the the regulations in Virginia right now require Dominion to do twenty seven hundred megawatts and AEP to do four hundred. So they've done a pretty decent amount. You can go to the next one. So as Summer mentioned, we're developing a site to to install a twenty megawatt, eighty megawatt hour battery storage facility. I'll show you some aerials to show you, but essentially, we hook right into the grid with the project and we'll draw power when we need it and then discharge when we need it. And we can provide both energy capacity to the grid, frequency response. And so it it has other benefits beside what you were talking about, which is really moving power around. One of the reasons they are doing this and a push for battery storage is because wind and solar are intermittent. And so like you said, you know, when they're when they're producing, and sometimes they do overproduce. And so that means they'd have to be backed down and be wasting energy you store in the battery and then you can discharge it later. Facilities operate remotely, there's no people on the site, there's no buildings on the site, there's just battery units. And I'll show you pictures and kind of get an idea of what that looks like.
Quick question.
Yeah, go ahead.
The size of it at, say, twenty megawatts?
Yeah.
How does that compare to, I believe it was a Tesla battery facility that exploded and burned? Was that in Europe? I can't remember. There was something, it was it was pretty big.
Yeah.
How big was that?
Fires in battery storage units or or large battery stores. I'm not sure which one you're referring to, but they were, I would say, this is the kind of the general sizes from probably this twenty megawatts to a hundred. Really is kind of the size.
Is this on the small end of the spectrum of what's being built today?
Yes, this is, yeah, this is on the smaller side, I'd say, yeah.
Okay.
So this is a picture, aerial photo, you can see the site there outlined in blue, the AP substation is just adjacent to it to the west. The Norfolk Southern Railroad runs on the the western side there. The AP station on the east, I'm sorry. So that's that's it, and then you see, coming from the north, that's the that's the Montevista Extension Road that that we were talking about. And the gate is basically right to the east of where the building is, that's north of the of the facility, of the site.
Okay. So there's no way across the tracks from, say, by Food City, right? Not unless you ride the electric lines, you know?
Yes.
Topography is pretty excellent.
There's no road across the track. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So this is a picture of of what the site plan is. And you can see, there's both battery storage units, which are the the units that look like they have little rectangles. And then there's transformers or the other electrical equipment that's on the site. And so there's there's twenty of them, twenty battery storage units that are about a megawatt each. So that's kind of a picture of what we envision it to look like at this.
So these are like freestanding, like electrical box looking?
Yeah.
Containers rather than buildings with?
This is what they look like.
Yeah, okay.
They basically look like, you know, the a truck, you know, trailer, essentially, semi-truck trailer is what they look like, basically. They're similar in size, they're, the ones that we're looking at installing on this site are about twenty nine feet long, nine feet tall and about six feet wide. So they're a little bit more narrow and a little long.
Oh, long, sorry.
Yeah, nine feet tall and like five feet wide, basically. That's that gives you an idea, so the battery unit, as I call it, is the big box that you see. And inside that box are a bunch of batteries, basically, what it boils down to, that's what it is.
What type of, do you know what type of material will be in those batteries?
Yeah, we're gonna use lithium-ion phosphate batteries, which is the really kind of the most recent chemistry. It's a lithium ion battery, which is the most common battery in the world. And the chemistry now that they use is lithium-ion phosphate. And that's, there's a few reasons we'll go through it, but basically, it's has has no heavy metals in it, has no kind of exotic material, it's all non-toxic. So that's kind of the way of the future. So first, the first consideration is the existing neighborhood compatibility with the proposed use in the adjacent nearby properties. So, and I'll show an aerial, but basically, the surrounding area is mostly industrial, the site is zoned industrial. There is some business zoning, but it's kind of like the small pieces. And then to the east is is county zoning and that's rural residential. And you'll see, so we have the battery units are set back a hundred feet from the the edge of the property line. And that's a, that's kind of, that's a requirement basically in the industry, essentially, it's an industry standard to have it set back that far. So, you know, there's no sound really from them, there's an air conditioning system that they do have on them that runs intermittently. But at the edge of the property line will be less than fifty five decibels, which is basically kind of a conversation level. Is what it is, and it's probably gonna be lower than that because we have a lot of trees. And we also have some topography that will help too. It's a passive system, so there's no, there's no moving parts or anything like that, there's no combustion, it's just batteries, they charge and then they discharge. And that's, that's all that's going on. There's no smell, there'll be no lights on the site either. And again, there's no people on the site.
It's all controlled remotely through?
Well, it's programmed, basically.
Computer program?
Yeah, yeah, we can program it to to respond various waves to the grid.
Okay.
And it responds.
This is your system, not EDP or any?
It will eventually be either owned by AEP or or basically operated by AEP is how it'll work. It's it's to, it's to meet this four hundred megawatts if they have to.
Okay.
Substation is prime location for?
Yeah, it's a perfect location for a lot of reasons, I mean, electrically, interconnection is is good. It has better support for the grid when it's right there, it fits better usually, again, you know, this is an industrial area, so we're sitting right up against the, you know, station.
So what are the odds, and this is coming from out here?
Yep.
I realize.
Yeah, I know.
You, you, Summer may have told you that we previously had reviewed a project request to put solar panels up beyond this property in the, I think Jeff Bain owns the property anyway, but it's a basically a field at the at the moment.
Yep.
What are the odds that somebody would put solar panels out there and be able to connect to your batteries to supply electricity?
Well, they'd probably be independent, they they wouldn't, they wouldn't connect directly.
Okay.
But, I mean, again, part of the reasons that they're put, they're putting batteries in is to be able to absorb power and then discharge power. For, like, when solar projects are online, because if the clouds come in or it's a cloudy day, then the battery can immediately, I mean, within milliseconds, it responds, can.
This project then is strictly necessary because AEP has a requirement to install four hundred megawatts worth?
That's part of it, I mean, plus the grid needs it.
Well.
I mean, the grid needs power, the grid needs responsiveness like this. You know, you you could use combustion turbines to do it, but they they take time to spin up. And this is like, this is instantaneous. So that's, that's why they like batteries.
So the, what you'd be storing would serve, I don't know, I I did some really quick math based on this New York deal. They said basically four megawatts would would be enough to power about three thousand homes. So this would power fifteen thousand homes even if all of AEP's generation went offline for how long?
Well, I I'd have to go back and look, it's it's, that's why there's, so there's
The megawatt hours.
Twenty megawatts, but there's eighty megawatt hours.
Right.
So then it would depend on how much those homes are consuming in that amount of time, basically. So, I mean, I'd have to go back and do the math.
I'm just, I'm just curious, I mean, how they came up with these numbers in the first place, but.
Well, I mean, there's, there's, I don't, I don't know off the top of my head, but there's, you know, the Energy Information Administration, they do all kinds of studies and they say, okay, the average household uses this how many, you know, this many kilowatt hours a year. So that's how, that's probably how they figured it out.
Okay. So basically, this, what's in the batteries would just get sucked into the system whenever AEP needed it?
Yep.
When they, when it called for it, based on their parameters. And it would, I mean, what's the geographic area that would be receiving it? I mean, it's basically gonna be in this region, right?
Yes.
I mean, it's not gonna.
Yeah, I mean, it's not going to.
It's not gonna get sucked to Maryland.
No, 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 it's it's gonna support.
But it would support the town, the county, probably this area.
Yeah, you know, like, and the manufacturers that are north, or I guess they're east of the of the site. Volvo's up there and.
A lot of power.
Yeah, James Hardy, I think, is there.
You'll have ten minutes because of because of Volvo.
Yeah. They're probably big consumers, but that's, and that's part of the reason, this is another reason that's a good area. It's because you've got big consumers like that. And they fluctuate, I mean, if they dropped offline, you know, there's a lot of things that go on, so. Another reason that we liked this area for on project.
Okay.
So I'm seeing, based on the drawing, you have, you have sort of two blocks of batteries and I guess there's, it looks like, based on looking at the drawing, there's a couple transformers in there to support those batteries. What's the square footage impact of each of those bundles or groups of of batteries?
So each, each battery unit.
The, I mean, like, the whole, the whole set of battery unit?
Oh, it's like four acres.
Four acres?
Yeah, that, it's essentially the cleared area that you see that that we're gonna level out is about four acres.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, you're talking you're talking close to a hundred thousand batteries, individual batteries of whatever capacity, yeah.
Yeah, because they're, so the 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 batteries are
Okay, now that helps a little bit.
They're not real big.
Right.
They're just kind of like that size. And then they they put them what they call modules. And those modules are boxes essentially that they stick inside, and there's like twenty four, I think there's twenty four modules in each one of those big storage units, it looks like a storage unit. So that's, that's kind of the the progression, I guess you'd say, of it. So here's the zoning, basically, you can see mostly industrial around it and the site itself is industrial. A little bit of business to the north there, and then it's rural residential to the east. And this is the the land use plan from the from the town. And they actually, you guys actually show kind of industrial in that rural residential area, so. Who knows what'll happen, right?
It might change next month, we don't know.
That's right. And then this is another one of the conditions, effective proposed use on existing and projected traffic volume. So there will be traffic during construction. The the batteries come basically fully loaded out, so they come in, you know, they basically come on semi-truck trailers and they're unloaded. So there's no construction, the batteries aren't built on site, they just bring in the big box and essentially, you know, we we have pads with pilings and we mount it right on top of that. So there'll be, you know, that truck traffic bringing in those twenty, you know, battery units. There'll be a a good deal of civil work on this site, because it's it's got a pretty good amount of topography to it. And we're gonna have to grade it out, and there's essentially gonna be two pads of ten, one's at like a thousand nine hundred and seventy feet and the other one's at nineteen eighty feet. But once the construction's done, and that should only take about seven to nine months, basically, once construction's done, there's no people on site, it's operated remotely, we'll send probably maybe a team in with a couple trucks, pickup trucks to do some some preventative maintenance, maybe quarterly, and that's, that's really it. And again, this is at the end of that Montevista Extension, it's it's a dead end, so there's, there's nowhere to go.
So if there's no, I mean, beyond grading, that's probably a contract for somebody.
Yes.
There's really no job creation in the area. There's really no job creation in the area. Might help people not, you know, have to leave work early sometimes, but. If the power goes out, but. So how does the town benefit from this?
So I've got a slide, economic development slide.
Electricity.
Yeah, at the end. Did I?
Okay.
Did I, can I, we'll roll through it when I get to that.
That's fine.
Is that all right?
Yeah.
Because I've got it. Yeah, I've got it.
That's cool.
Free to move on.
Yeah.
I'll be quiet then.
No, no, that, no, that's fine. I, I.
I didn't bring a pen, so I can't write.
It's in my supplemental, so it's way in the back. But, and this is, this is actually, this addresses a little bit of the current future needs for the proposed town. So again, the battery storage unit is, is, you know, they're, they're, they're requiring them to help provide stability to the grid. Because since they, since they react instantaneously, if there's any kind of anomaly on the grid, the battery can immediately be up and, and, and supporting the grid. Either way, either chart, you know, either providing power to it or taking power off it if it's necessary. It provides frequency response too for when there's kind of anomalies, if loads drop fast. You know, the, the frequency of the grid can drop and so the battery can immediately just step in and help out. Provides backup power as well. So it, it has a lot of good positive impact to the grid. It's more kind of broad though. It's not really specifically for the town, let's say. But the town will benefit from it being there, that's for sure. Again, I, I mentioned AEP has to install four hundred megawatts. This is only twenty, so they've got a long ways to go, but it's a step in the right direction. And then my, my last kind of bullet there, what's happened is there hasn't been enough power being built, basically enough generation. And then because, you know, we're kind of moving away from fossil fuels, there's been a lot of larger plants getting shut down. And the capacity market this year is, the, the pricing was ten times what it was last year. So we've got to start adding capacity. And again, this is a step, but it's a step in the right direction.
So how often do the batteries have to be replaced?
They last between fifteen and twenty years, depending on how much they're used, basically. So fifteen, if they're cycled, pretty hard.
Number of cycles?
Yeah, that's how, yeah, how many cycles. So, and then if, again, they're, they're in modules. So if, if one for some reason gets, you know, kind of drawn down more than the others, which is not supposed to happen, you can replace a module. Then the considerations of effect on property values. And, you know, based on kind of what you see as standard impacts on property values, we don't see that there's any impact on property value. It's mostly industrial around there for one thing, but there's no, there's no smell, there's no sound of significant amount offsite. There's no lighting, there's no increase in, in traffic. There's no decrease to public safety. We'll also have a fence around the, the facility itself. So not only is it remote, but then we have a fence around it to prevent anyone from getting in as well, so. And then you've got the, the large setback. And, and we're keeping the trees, so you won't be able to see it. There's also a big topographic kind of the topographic dip that you, from the, when you're looking from the rural residential to the east and you're looking west towards the site, there's about a thirty foot drop and, or there's about, it's about twelve feet now kind of center of where our units will be. But once we excavate it and grade it, it'll be at about a thirty foot drop. So you won't be able, and like I said, the batteries are nine feet tall, so you won't be able to see it at all.
You say it has no lights, like are you, no lights at all or you have planned like surveillance equipment to secure the site and things like that?
No, there's no lights. There won't be any. Yeah. And then, you know, it, it seems to fit the comprehensive plan. Like I said, the town's comprehensive plan has industrial all around it. So it's, it's, you know, kind of more of an industrial use of the substations right there, so. Oh, this is, this is the elevation change I was talking about. So from that blue point there in the middle of that rural residential to kind of the beginning of where our site would be. Currently, it's about a fifteen foot elevation drop when we grade it out of about thirty-three feet, so. And this is just a conclusion that, you know, we think that it, it meets all the requirements or a special exception for the town. And we would like to get a longer, so this is a long process. I mean, we go through, it's like a, you know, the, the permitting process is with, with you all is kind of the short end of the things, you know. The really long part is the interconnection with AEP, interconnection with PJM, negotiations with AEP, takes years, basically. So we wanted to try to get a four-year special exception if we can.
But, I mean, this is, I mean, obviously it's a project that requires cooperation with AEP, but it's something AEP needs done. Is AEP even thinking about building these battery storage facilities themselves? Or are they hoping people like you will come along and build them for them so that they don't have to get into that themselves?
It's, it's basically kind of a combination is the way the, the regulations were set up. So AEP is, I'd say they're further behind. Dominion is further down the road than AEP is. Last year, AEP, AEP put out two RFPs for seven and a half megawatt facilities. So they have fifteen. I don't know where it stands. We didn't get involved in it because it was only to build for AEP. So there was no kind of development process and all the kind of front end stuff. So they are kind of starting to try to figure it out. And we've started to talk to them too about the project. So they're, they're aware of it. But until we get a little bit further down the road, we can't have serious discussions with them.
What, what about the, the adjacent properties? Are they, do they know that this is coming? Do they know anything about it? What it is, what it entails? And I, and I guess what I'm getting at is, are there risks that they should be aware of? I mean, you're pretty close to the railroad tracks. We don't want to stop the railroad from running. You know, if, I mean, worse, what is the worst case scenario? So the worst. Once this project gets there, you get these battery packs there and they go kablooey.
So this is the public safety slides that I've got. So it's going to address, I think, at least the majority of what usually comes up in the public safety questions about the batteries. So, and I think we mentioned this a bit, lithium ion batteries, you probably got one in your pocket right now, or you got one sitting on the table. So they're everywhere. So they're the most common, you know, chemistry of, of batteries. And they do, they have a very low probability of failure. So it's like whatever that is, point zero 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 five percent. So there was like seventy, there were seven hundred and fifty billion, no, seven hundred and fifty million cells that were out last year and they had like thirty incidents. So it's a very, very small kind of percentage, but it happens, you know, like you, you were asking.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think everybody else in the room probably recalls a certain Audi SUV in the Walmart parking lot in Dublin. You know, why the car burned up could tell you, don't know what caused, you know, the battery to ignite. But that's, that's, I think, probably most people's number one fear.
That's, that's it, yeah. So, and that's, and I'll walk through. So, and we talked about the lithium ion phosphate. Again, it's the most stable chemistry. Basically, it's, it's, I mean, you can puncture it and it's, it really doesn't, it's not going to short out and cause a thermal runaway like that. So it's, it's very durable, very stable. It's the most stable right now that they've got. It's. A little bit. Yeah, but they're, they're heavy. These things are real heavy.
I looked up like lithium iron phosphate car battery one time and now I keep getting coated lithium.
Oh, yeah, exactly. But it's, it, there, so there's non-toxic materials in it. That's one of the big things, one of the big reasons they've gone to this, you know, from some of the older batteries. The real old batteries had like lead acid in it. The electrolyte is actually, it's a lithium phosphate salt that's in there. So it's, it's a totally different composition too than what most people have in their head. Again, we can close the site with a fence. It's locked so that no one can get in. And the, the, we talked a little bit about this. So there obviously is some fluid in the electrolyte. Normally, it's, it's pretty much absorbed by the cathode, so there's not really a lot of fluid in there generally. But there's kind of three layers to contain the fluid. There's the battery cell itself, then there's the module that it sits in, and then there's the big enclosure that it sits in. And that big enclosure is designed to keep water out. So it's, you know, water's not supposed to get in there because there's all kind of electrical gear in there. So anything should stay within that enclosure. So the system is designed to meet all the NFPA requirements, national fire protection requirements, underwriters labs, lots of code compliance. And so it's got to meet all these requirements.
Speaking of fire.
Yeah.
Is there any requirement for fire suppression built in onsite, nothing like that? It's just a freestanding bunch of batteries sitting there?
And really, right, as kind of the batteries have progressed and become a little bit more common, I guess you'd say, but still a little ways, essentially they let the fire burn. They let it, it burns itself out. And that's why we spaced everything so that it doesn't propagate. And, and actually they've done, they've done some tests that, so the batteries are kind of in stacks like this, basically. And they've tested it, and if they're about two inches apart, the, the fire did not propagate from one stack to the next within the enclosure. So, you know, now that was a couple, a couple of tests they did to show that. But obviously it's propagated in some other, in some other instances, but there were different chemistries too, so. But yeah, it'll produce hydrogen, basically, the, the batteries do. And if they produce too much, there's, there's a hydrogen detection system in the, in the enclosure. If it gets too high, it actually will ignite the hydrogen, just to kind of get rid of it, essentially is what it'll do. It'll shut down the unit itself as well. And then there's, there's insulated fireproofing between, you know, on the walls essentially of the enclosure. And then they have panels that will blow out panels, deflagration panels that if the pressure builds up. Because that's in the, like, in one of the, the most, I guess, commonly known about fires. And this was probably fifteen years ago, they did not have those panels. And so there was an enclosed fire in a battery system. And as the gases built up, there was no way for it to get out. And so that's, that's what caused the explosion. But now they have the panels that blow out and it lets the gases out. So it prevents explosion. That's what it's there for.
Blabby.
Because of the fire break, there's, I guess, one of the questions I was going to ask.
Yes.
Was around your blocks. Do you plan to have any, say, vegetation rehabilitation because of the grading you have to do? But I'm seeing you have, that you'll have to have a twenty-five foot fire break between those battery sites you develop and trees.
Yep.
So is it going to be devoted vegetation in that, in those sections nearby the batteries?
Uh, it'll probably have like ground cover, you know, to sta, sort of stabilize for environment.
Yeah, erosion.
Erosion sediment control reasons, but it'll be, you know, kind of just ground cover. So that it can't propagate is essentially what it'll be.
So those panels you were talking about basically would help prevent a chance of a blabby, what you're saying?
Of an explosion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
While coming, you know, tankers on.
Yes.
On trains, you know, they can blabby, so.
So what, they, they, they basically are blowout panels essentially on the roof of the enclosures. And if pressure gets too big, then they'll blow out and then they'll, they'll let the, the.
Yeah, like a pressure relief.
Yes, exactly. That's it. Go ahead. Thanks. And there's the panels that we talked about a little bit. And so the fire does produce toxic gas. It's kind of like a plastic fire. Basically the same kind of toxic gas that a plastic fire causes. But in the fires that they've had, they've monitored the air quality and there hasn't been air quality issues, like they haven't had to evacuate or anything like that. And that's, for one of the reasons is, most of the gas stays in the enclosure. If it's getting out, it goes out the, the deflagration panels and it's kind of projected upwards and then it gets dispersed. So that's kind of how it works.
What is the color of the smoke?
Uh, I mean, when I watch the, the video, it's kind of a whitish color.
Okay.
Yeah.
I know, you know, some chemical reactions cause like yellow or.
Yeah, no, it's like a white gray. I, I guess I'd call it more normal. It's not like a dark black either.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's, yeah.
Yeah. So here's some of the.
Produce electricity.
Here's some of the economic development information. So you're right, there, there's really not going to be any local jobs, long-term jobs created because it's all kind of remotely operated.
But there isn't.
It's not too shabby.
There's a significant amount of site civil work that, that has to be done. And, you know, generally that'll be done by a local contractor. And, and obviously the.
There's one right next door. They did Food City.
Yeah.
And the fill, you know, and, and stone and things that we need for the grading, you know, that'll all be kind of locally.
I did have a couple more public safety questions.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
So you said there's no fire suppression system in the, in those modules, right? Or I guess in the trailer enclosures. So you're really relying on the fireproofing and really just, if it does get out of control, then blows out, pressure relief, thermal runaway, wait for that to complete, right?
Yep.
Uh, well, during that process, there would have to be some sort of, you know, fire response anyway, regardless of that. So I didn't know if you had a plan for like an emergency response plan, worked, worked with our town fire department and and county officials to make sure that, that, you know, this is aware on them and that they develop a plan in tandem with you while you're doing this?
Yeah, I mean, so the site that we have developed is in James City County. And we had a meeting with their local fire officials and we kind of went through this.
Okay.
And how it would be addressed. And, and so we can do the same here.
I mean, I would assume that your systems would notify you there were issues.
Oh, yeah.
In advance, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, the, the.
Probably earlier on than failure.
Yes, it, it'll, it'll, it'll let you know and it'll shut it down or it'll kind of, it'll isolate it.
I mean, you would know that it's overproducing gas or the battery.
Yes.
Banks are getting hot, hotter than they should, those kind of things at the remote site.
Yep.
At which point it would be great to notify local EMS folks that we may have a situation developing, but hopefully not.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
And that would all be part of whatever plan.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah, there'll have to be some sort of communication plan like between our ops center and.
Still need to, you know, have some sort of hazmat plan for how far do they need to be?
Right.
You know, what's, what is actually contained in those units? So they know if they do need to provide any suppression, what type of suppression method they need.
Yeah.
Yeah, then of course any evacuation issues if, if needed, which shouldn't, like you said, but, you know, kind of this worst case scenario. Type of ERG response, it's pretty normal.
Right, right.
For that stuff, at least at first, until you can figure out what's going on.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and thankfully, I was actually looking at, I was looking at the map and I was, I was looking at our hydrant map as well to see where the closest hydrant is. And there is a hydrant on Montevista Extension right next to the old Food City, right around the corner from there. Kind of going up towards the railroad tracks.
Okay.
So it'd be fairly easy for one of our trucks to, you know, lay in with some, with some hydrant, with some supply line from the hydrant, if needed for a lot of water at any point. Because I know with this, a lot of water would be, would be required if they're going to use any suppression. Typically, you just let them burn, like you, like you said, and just monitor and let it happen.
Trying to prevent it from propagating to anywhere else.
Do you know how many hours it can take for a thermal runaway to complete? Do you know how many hours it can take for a thermal runaway to complete per? Sure, I'm just curious, because Tesla batteries, they can take about eight hours for them to fully burn.
Yeah. It'll take a long time, eight hours at least, I would say. And these are, this, this is larger.
Yeah.
There's more fuel in it.
Right. I guess it also depends, yeah, third's current state of, uh.
Yeah, 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 the, yeah, the state of charge of it.
Yeah. We'll play into it. Okay, um, what about like a, just a disaster recovery or a COOP plan? You guys have any of that kind of stuff set up for failure and for, you know, switching over to.
We can work with you guys to put something together.
Okay.
We've got, you know, now, now that the batteries have been out there a little bit, and like I said, EDF's done like five thousand megawatts, they've got some documentation to help out. Of course it needs to be, you know, customized to the locality.
Right.
We can do that.
Basically what you've, what you've told us earlier is you've probably got close to four years to work all this out before you're online.
Yes, yes. It's a, it's a ways down the road.
Do these, uh, do those units have any type of security system on them for any potential breach that would happen on them? I know you said there's no, like, let's say cameras on the property, but as far as if someone opened that unauthorized, somehow, you know, got over a fence and tried to.
Yeah.
Break into your stuff.
I can't remember. I know if you open the doors, it'll shut down.
Okay.
It'll isolate itself.
Yeah.
I can't remember if it has an alarm. I'm assuming it, if it's gonna shut, if it's shutting itself down, we're gonna know. So there's an alarm, you know, automatically. But yeah, there's a, there's a feature, a safety feature essentially, that if the doors to the enclosures are open, the unit's gotta be isolated.
I mean, I, I say that because we have, uh, a creative population here.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so you just never know and you have to be mindful of that. So, I, yeah, I think at least the minimum, something like that would be good. But even if possible, I don't think even a couple cameras would be bad. But that's up to your discretion, of course.
I mean, and.
I mean, it's your hardware, right? So it's your, it's your risk, so.
But that's another reason, the location, we like the location because it's off the beaten path.
It is, yeah.
Someone would really have to be looking for it. So that, that kind of helps.
Wow.
Some people are looking for places to be.
I know.
Yeah. Yeah, well, the substation right next to it, yeah, the substation location.
From the pictures, it doesn't look like they're gonna be overhanging roofs or hauntings or any, like, anything like that that would provide people cover.
They might think they can get inside it. You know?
You never know.
And then stormwater, so, uh, we, we do on the site plan, if you, if you see it, there's in the, uh, the northwestern corner, we do have a stormwater basin there. Preliminary size, but we'll have to go through all the, you know, the more rigorous calculations and sort of stormwater studies. But we intend to leave the vegetation and the trees, which should help, but we'll also, we'll have the catch basin too. I think that's it. Oh, I do have some pictures.
Beautiful.
I mean, there's not a lot. It's very, it's very heavily vegetated.
Yeah.
You can see kind of how it's dropping off. This is look, this is standing, uh, basically between the substation and the site. So looking west essentially, down that, down the hill.
Yeah.
I've only, I got a couple more, but they're all, they all look basically the same. And then for, for decommissioning, um, so that we, we take the batteries units out, rec- hopefully recycle them. There's not a lot of recycling right now, but it's like everything. It'll, by the time we have to get rid of these things, it'll, it'll be in, in place. And, and the lithium, lithium ion phosphate batteries are highly recyclable. You can recover a lot of the material from them. So that's, that's a good thing.
And they're not interchangeable with Tesla batteries?
Well, these are Tesla. I mean, what, what we're looking at right now, I mean, I don't know by the time we get there.
Don't let the Tesla owners know.
Generically, we're looking at lithium iron phosphate batteries, which is basically the way most batteries are going. But Tesla batteries, like Tesla, Tesla uses a lithium iron phosphate battery. So, at least in their utility scale stuff.
Well, in twenty to twenty-five years, I'm sure there'll be a new technology. I know Toyota's working on.
Oh.
You know, new battery technology and so is Tesla, so yeah.
Yeah.
By that time, there'll be something newer and better, so.
Oh, absolutely. And that's, that's it, I think. Yeah, that's it.
Thanks for your presentation.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Any other questions, comments?
I'll, I'll send it to Summer and then she can send it to you if you'd like to see it, so.
All right, appreciate that.
I've got a couple more real quick. Um, so what is the, you, you talked about decommissioning, but what is the anticipated life expectancy of this project or this, this unit?
So the battery should last about fifteen years.
Fifteen years?
They're used pretty heavily. They'll, oops, last about fifteen years. And then at that point, it'll be, I mean, the technology's probably gonna be so different. I would say, you know, I would say that the battery will continue. I just don't know what technology will be there. I'm, I'm sure it'll be replaced, but the site will stay.
Yeah, okay.
So you'll just repurpose the site if new technology comes in?
I'd say we put new technology and take the old stuff out and put new batteries in. Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
As far as your business goes, well, you said, uh, was it James City that you said where, where you have this currently set up?
Yeah.
Is there other pla- is there other pla-? Okay, do you have anything currently in place and in use anywhere?
Uh, EDF has lots, they have five thousand megawatts of batteries.
Okay, I didn't know if you as Calvert had anything yet in operation.
No.
Okay.
I sell, so I'm a, I'm a developer, so I sell the battery, I sell the projects and then someone else builds and owns it and then I'm, I'm out.
Okay.
I don't actually own the stuff, even all the solar I've done, I don't own any of it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, uh, interesting, okay.
So if AEP didn't buy this, who would buy it?
Uh, another investor that potentially is looking at doing batteries.
Van could offer you a better price than AEP? And then he's gotta deal with AEP?
That's what I mean, then you have to deal, no matter what, you have to deal with AEP. You know, the objective is to have AEP because they, they, they need it for one thing, under the regulations. And it just makes the most sense for them to own and operate it because they're great.
Yeah, it's designed with them in mind.
Yes.
Given the location and the proximate properties.
Is there any potential expansion from this site if needed?
There's probably not room on this site. There's, there's not enough capacity. We have to start changing out transformers and start getting a little bit pricier than we would like. And then physically.
If AEP wanted that, you know, AEP's like, hey, we need more capacity.
Yeah.
And they're like, we'll apply new transformers, whatever.
I don't think we'd be able to do it because a hundred foot setback, if you, if we pulled up, you'd see it's, if some of the batteries, it comes close to.
Oh, we really like this here and we want to double the capacity at this substation.
Could you do it adjacent?
Go on the other side.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, yeah.
And do another twenty.
They could, I, I have to go back and look. I mean, I don't know what the county regulations are because then you're gonna be in county.
Hmm, yeah, that's true, yeah.
You know, the county, under the county regs. And like I said, then they'd have to also start changing out the transformers in the substation. Because we're gonna, we're gonna basically fill them up essentially with these, this project.
And they'd have to figure out how to cross the trail easily. Because there's the trail there. Or the tracks.
Under cover of night.
They'll dig a tunnel.
Okay. Anything else?
That was the main one I had along with the, along with asking about the, the environmental modifications that you'd make after, after doing the regrading. And you mentioned that, uh, ground cover and things like that for, um, for the, for the area that's within your, within your fire barrier.
Right, right.
Is there outs- outside of that twenty-five foot barrier of what you're going to be impacting through construction? Do you have a, a plan in place to, say, replant new trees or some sort of, um, some sort of environmental mitigation to, to secure that, um, you're replacing what you're taking?
So. We're, I mean, we're, we're gonna take trees out.
Right.
And we're gonna do the grading. And then there's gonna be, you know, this twenty-five foot kind of area between the batteries and, and the trees. And we're gonna plant that with some sort of a ground cover. But that was, that was it.
That's the main plan.
Yeah, that's, and then the stormwater system. We also actually have a, we, I don't know if it's gonna be a culvert or some sort of a berm on the southwestern part of the property to direct it to the stormwater pond from that, from that side.
This isn't a large enough parcel that, um, DEQ would be getting involved and make you find some project somewhere to, you know, plant trees or something to make up for lost vegetation or anything like that. Um, I wouldn't think.
I.
I mean, you're not rerouting a waterway or anything like that, right?
It's negotiable, so the PBRs are greater than five watts and disturbance area of greater than ten acres. But I don't think you're gonna have a ten acre disturbance on that parcel, so.
Not if you're leaving.
He's leaving.
A tree buffer on it.
Yeah, so I don't think it falls into that.
Yeah.
Including the stormwater pond.
Yeah.
That we're disturbed.
So I doubt he's gonna fall into it.
I wouldn't have thought, but, anyway. Worth, worth asking.
Thank you for your.
Sure.
Thank you for being here. Sorry you couldn't be at the big conference.
That's all right. That's all right.
They prob- they probably were serving shrimp cocktail and we didn't.
That's right.
We'll blame Summer for that. She, it was her turn to bring the shrimp cocktail and the bacon wrapped scallops, yeah.
Oh, wow.
All right, um. Is there any further discussion from the commission members on this? Or should we go ahead and set a date for a public hearing if we can agree on one? Are we ready for that? I, I think we are.
Do we need to note considerations prior to public hearing or can we do it after?
Note considerate.
Like stipulations and things like that?
Okay, so conditions are, you, you're welcome to mention conditions, but you, when they're stipulated is at public hearing.
That's right.
Yeah. But if you want to discuss it, so you are decide, relatively collectively decided, that is up to you.
You would just be discussing any potential conditions until someone makes a motion.
Okay.
And includes conditions or doesn't.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
And then, and the motion comes after public hearing?
Yes.
Great. All right. So does anybody have any dates that they feel a timeframe or?
So it has to be October, right? Or?
So I need it at least two weeks from tomorrow. Because you have to advertise.
I will be out of town that day and the following day.
That is fine, I'm saying that is your minimum.
Minimum is two weeks. Okay, what's our maximum?
Uh, you have.
It's what, sixty?
Ninety days from date of, date of application receipt. So that is roughly, um, August twenty-third. So it needs to be before the end of November, I believe.
Before the end of November that it's approved by council?
That you guys approve it. And then council has, I believe it's thirty or sixty days with it after that, yeah. But you've got ninety days to submit your report to council.
Understood.
Yep.
Right, right now, we don't have a meeting scheduled for October.
True.
Because it's, it falls on Columbus Day, right?
It falls on, so Columbus Day and then your makeup day is the third Tuesday. And so we canceled it pending business, but now you have business, potentially, if you so move.
I could do the fifteenth.
Of October.
Mm-hmm.
That looks pretty good to me. How about you?
The seventh. I could probably do the fifteenth too, as long as.
That week is not good. That's fire prevention week, so.
Hmm.
Busy week for me personally.
As long as we don't go to the, like, the last weeks of October, I should be good. Yeah.
Yeah, I could do the second, I could do October second or October fifteenth is the closest days.
Yeah.
You think that far ahead?
Good?
Is it?
Fifteenth is?
Mm-hmm.
That's right.
Well, they'll just have to change.
Can we split you in half so you can do secretary? Okay, well. Well, I guess we always got the conference room down there, right?
We do, and we also have the train station with advanced.
Oh, right, okay.
Yes.
Good point, yeah.
I'd rather do the train station.
Sounds fancy, I like that.
Public hearing.
Maybe shrimp will be included.
I highly doubt it, sorry, guys. True.
Oh, that's, okay.
True.
Oh, well.
That's a question I was gonna ask about after we're done live.
Okay.
Okay, so are we ruling out the fifteenth then?
I would encourage we rule out the fifteenth.
Do the seventeenth.
Do a staff report to council.
Have to do the seventeenth.
I probably won't because you won't have gone to hearing yet. But you do have a member of council sitting as part of your quorum.
You look familiar to the one. I wonder if they're related, if they're like brothers.
twin brother, actually.
Yeah.
Doppelganger.
Well, that, either I could do the seventeenth or the second. Or the eleventh. I'm trying not to do your Friday, but. Yeah, seventeenth is a Thursday.
What is about the twenty-first?
I could do the twenty-first.
I'm wide open, guys.
Except for the fifteenth, yeah. Okay.
You're okay with that? Does that work for you, Ken?
I hope so.
Okay. Do we need a motion to, to propose a timing or can we?
Yes, please.
Okay. Summer, I make a motion that we, um, that we schedule a planning commission meeting for the public hearing on us, the special exception we discussed today.
When?
On, um, October twenty-first, twenty twenty-four.
At what time?
At six PM.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion. Anything else in your motion? Is that complete? We have a complete motion to, um, schedule a, a, a meeting of the planning commission on October twenty-first, twenty twenty-four at six PM. Uh, specifically to hold a public hearing on this special exception request. Um, and I have the number somewhere, where'd I put it? Doggone it, I lost it. Oh, well. All right, can I get a second?
Take it.
Got a second? All right, wanna do a roll call vote to make it really official?
Mr. Davis, Ms. Arthur, Mr. Scrants.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Hale.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
All right, the yeses have it, so we will get that on the schedule for ten twenty-one twenty-four at six PM, right here in council chambers. All right, is that good for the applicant? Okay.
He'll, he'll make it work.
All right. Okay.
I have another.
Now, we've got something else we've gotta deal with. You're welcome to stay, you're welcome to head out, it's up to you.
Yeah. Yeah.
Appreciate you coming and spending time with us and explaining all this to us.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
I think it's very beneficial.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
Yep. I will send it out, yep.
All right, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Yeah, very much. Appreciate it.
All right. Somebody mentioned appointing Olivia Hale as secretary of the planning commission.
Yeah.
So, does that require a motion, I would think?
Yes, it does.
To do so?
She is.
Is Olivia Hale amenable to this? I'll take that as a yes. If I, I'd love to have a motion to, uh, appoint Ms. Hale as secretary.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint Olivia Hale as secretary for the Town and Pulaski Planning Commission.
I have a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Hale seconded it. Wow, that was quick.
I wonder why.
I don't know. Payback for something probably, no.
Roll call.
All right, let's, let's take a roll call vote on that one to make it official.
Mr. Davis, Ms. Arthur, Mr. Scrants.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Hale. Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Should he have abstained? I don't know. Anyway, okay. All right. Thank you for, uh, agreeing to do so. Well, welcome. Do we need to have a party in celebration?
Reception.
No.
A reception, a reception with shrimp at the train station. At five PM on the twenty-first.
Are we still on the live? Ah, okay.
Yep, until we, uh, adjourn here, which I guess we don't have anything else.
All right, uh, it says we have no old business. No other business.
No staff report. No. That's a first.
Any comments from our commissioners? Any other?
Thank you, Summer, for your work on this.
Thank you, Summer.
That's my comment.
Yeah, yeah, it was very detailed on the.
Yeah, yeah, this was, this was great.
It was like, what questions do I ask?
This was the best special exception, uh, overview I've seen.
Yeah, this was really, really good work, Summer. I'm sure it took you quite a few hours.
You guys are welcome.
Kevin could have other words, but the two and a half years about, I, I've been here, yeah. Looks good.
Well, Summer's not been here that long, so.
Well, I know, I'm saying. Other, you've been here longer, so you could have even a better comment.
Oh, no, I don't, I won't, I won't comment on, on those things. People, people who are no longer around and things like that, we won't comment, um, either direction. At this point, I would be happy to entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? None. We're adjourned.